The hour of 7:30 has arrived and I think past us by just a few seconds. I'd like to call to order this study session of District 116 for March the 3rd, 2020. Roll call please.
Member Carter?
Here.
Member Exum?
Here.
Member Patton?
Here.
Member Pelosi?
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Vice President Hall?
Here.
President Dunham?
Here. We do have a quorum present this evening. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward to citizen statements. If anybody wishes to address the board this evening, please fill out a Goldenrod sheet and turn it in to our recording secretary. We have none as of yet, so while you are considering if you're going to move forward and do that. I'd like to recognize Austin and also Molly Sweeney tonight for running the cameras for us, so that the folks at home can watch. So we thank them. Anyone wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. We do have an exec session this evening for purposes of personnel and pending litigation.
And negotiations and property.
And negotiations and property. Four things. I knew about the two. Okay. All right. We'll read the formal language when we get to that point in the agenda. But we will have, there won't be any action after that session this evening. Motion to approve the agenda would be in order.
Shall we move?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion is carried. Our first administrative report is an engagement proposal letter discussion from IGW Architects. I don't see them here.
No, I think we'll just approve it.
Just sits there in front of you?
Yep.
This is in accordance with what was discussed last meeting, so nothing's changed.
It's just out, you also have the schedule. So when Riley was here last, he presented that we are going to very aggressively this spring try to have the programming and concept phases completed. So as you can see in the schedule, we're going to start on March 24th, and we will be coming back to the board hopefully by June 16th. So I just wanted you to have that information as well.
Okay. So this is just a report to us. There are district architects and so we'll move forward.
And then we'll put it on the next...
Agenda for formal approval?
On the business meeting next week for formal approval.
Okay. All right. Any questions about it? Seeing none, we'll go ahead. Our policy review, that's all of our administrative reports tonight. Policy review is Press Plus 102. Wish to discuss this, or this is mailed to us, and I know you've been spending some time on it.
Yes. So I'm going to walk you through. Stop me as you have questions. Some of these are aligned to the legislative changes as of January 1st. So in our earlier meeting, I shared with you all of those legislative updates around workplace sexual harassment, mandated reporting. So some of this will sound familiar. So this press packet aligns us and gets us in alignment with all of those legislative updates. So I'll walk you through, well, kind of walk you through all of them, but I'll do it very quickly. So, or do you want me to just walk through just the highlights? All right. So if we flip through to 2105, I have a note from our attorney. This is the ethics and gift ban information that was part of that new legislation. I have a couple of questions our attorney suggests. So in the, if you looked at it, there's language that discusses board members and elected officials should report claims of sexual harassment against, this is the, if you have a claim of sexual harassment against a board member or the board president, remember that? That legislation? It can be reported to the board president or to me. Our attorney suggests that we follow the language and appoint an outside investigator. So my question for you is would the board like to authorize the board president or the superintendent to appoint the outside investigator when a complaint of sexual harassment is made against a board member by another board member or elected official?
I think the superintendent. Yeah. It seems like if it involves someone on the board...
Yep.
The board president would have a conflict of interest.
I would agree, superintendent.
Thank you.
You're the most accessible.
Okay. So that is 2105. We actually have the exact same question in 2110 related to qualifications, term, and duties of board officers. This again brings in the sexual harassment complaint language. So would the board like to authorize the board president or the superintendent to appoint the outside investigator? I'm assuming superintendent. All right. The next one I wanted to just highlight is 222, 220. And this is Board of Education meeting procedures. So there's an exhibit there that our attorneys wanted to bring your attention related to log of closed meeting minutes, and this includes specific employees. This is where it brings in the contractors' language, volunteers, related to the Wage Increased Transparency Act. So it's just bringing in some of that legal legislation. But Jean Hansis wanted to make sure that I brought it to your attention. So I've done that. 480. Let's skip ahead. So 480 is accounting audits. So this is language related to our annual audit, our annual financial report, and inventories. So there's specific language, which we already follow, related to the dispensation, disposition of district property whenever there's a grant award. But the other part of this, Carol, this is the capitalization threshold. Our attorneys are recommending that we do not adopt the capital threshold language related to this policy. So I'm going to let Carol explain why.
That has to do with a different county standards board's ruling, Gatsby 34. For some of you that may have been on the board many, many years ago, we chose not to adopt that because it would require us to go out and do a complete inventory at a huge cost to the district, and so we chose at that time not to do that. So our opinion, every year on our audit, is qualified because we don't adopt that standard. So this threshold of capitalization has to do with that. So we don't, since we don't capitalize assets in inventory, then we're not going to adopt that portion of this policy.
But we are adopting inventory and the disposition of district property. We're already doing that in practice, but now it'll be part of the policy. Any questions? Okay. The rest of these, 4190, we've talked about this quite a bit. The targeted school violence prevention program. So I just wanted to highlight that we have met the standards that were listed in here. School districts were required to implement a threat assessment procedure by 12/6/19, and we were able to, we did that. We also sent teams to be trained by the February deadline. So I just wanted to kind of update you. I don't know, Todd, if you want to share anything else, but I think we've met that mandate. Then on to Section 5. There are a couple places in Section 5, as you saw, that we just need to update the names. We have some of our interim folks still listed in there, so we'll need to go in and change all of those names. 520 was the workplace harassment language added in. And then I have a couple of questions that I have to ask from 530. So 530 is the hiring process and criteria. So our attorneys recommend, so this says a school board that wishes to reserve the exemptions related to one of the legal requirements about abuse, neglect, the Illinois Department of Children and Family Services, and this is the DCFS language, how we're screening applicants. One of the things in here talks about wage salary and wage history. We're not allowed to ask those questions anymore. So our attorney is saying that we should not adopt that part related to the applicant's wage or salary history, because that, we're not allowed to do that anymore. But all the other language related to DCFS, findings of abuse and neglect, we're already doing those things, so we'll make sure that we adopt those. Okay. 550, you guys have seen this already. I had this in front of you when our attorney Susan Nicholas was here to talk about the cannabis presentation. So you've already seen drug and alcohol-free workplace. I am required to ask you a couple of questions here. An employee is on call when the, this is talking about when employees are impaired under the influence of alcohol, or if we feel that they've consumed cannabis. The language here describes what does impaired mean? And so the questions are, an employee is on call when the employer schedules him or her within at least 24 hours' notice to be on standby or otherwise responsible for performing employment-related tasks. Has the board adopted the phrase or being on call into this policy? So we're going to accept the policy as it is stated, that if we do not want folks who might be on call, like our custodians, who else would be other on call? Maintenance people are not allowed, if they know they're on call and we find out they're impaired, you know, they know what on call means. So we're saying yes, we, okay. And let me see what this next one. The next one is about vaping, including the statutory example that includes the term vape pen or provides notice that vaping products are also prohibited through the term e-cigarette. So I mean, we do not want our students vaping on campus either. So we're accepting the default sentence related to vaping. Okay. And let's see, the rest of these are pretty basic, abuse and neglected child reporting. We're already following all those mandates. We talked about that in January. Making sure I hit all my specific questions I have to ask you. 5290 is the next one that our attorneys wanted to bring to your attention. So 5290, employment termination and suspensions. So this language specifically is added, this includes recommending a nonlicensed employee for immediate dismissal for willful or neglectful failure to report an instance of suspected child abuse. So they've added that language. If we know of a nonlicensed or licensed employee who has not reported child abuse, we can dismiss them immediately. Okay. Just wanted to, and this one also adds in the legislative updates related to gender violence. So there was a whole section we talked about in January about gender violence being a protected class now. So that's also in 5290. 660, I have a specific question related to curriculum, so I'm going to jump ahead to that one. So 660 is about civics. This is basically saying that beginning with the 2021 school year in grades six, seven, or eight, students must receive at least one semester of civics education in accordance with the Illinois Learning Standards for Social Science. So I'm going to say yes, that we are going to, that right now in grades nine through 12, we already have this as a requirement, and we're going to work toward bringing this requirement to sixth, seventh, and eighth. Okay? And then 7150, I'll flip ahead through all the sixes here. So we have some more Ashley's Law. I know we've talked about Ashley's Law so much already. 7150 is agency and police interviews. So I wanted to make sure we pointed this one out, since we had a lot of conversation around interviewing students, when and when we don't do that. So this will be one, we'll make sure our, I saw Dr. Berenson was here, so we'll make sure our new SRO, and our SRO from the middle school is aware of this. So the statute specifically assigns the duties to school, does not specifically assign these duties to school officials, but instead states that a law enforcement officer, school resource officer, or other security personnel must ensure that the questions are met, conditions are met, or before detaining or questioning a student on school grounds. So there's some very specific, all things that we made sure we put in our intergovernmental agreement around how we notify the parent, and how we make sure that we do everything in reasonable effort to make sure that the parent is there when we're interviewing students. So that is 7150. And then 7270, this is the policy that we did not adopt about administering medicines to students, where we were going to work with families kind of individually. Susan said that there were so many districts, she said that when she was here presenting, so many districts that did not want to be the trendsetters and adopt this, that now we have been, we are basically being told it's not optional anymore, that we have, we're being forced to adopt it. So that just brings in all that new language. This also, though, includes the undesignated glucagon, which we talked quite a bit. So we are going to adopt that part of the, well, we already had, but we're going to make sure that it reflects that we're going to maintain the supply of undesignated glucagon that's accessible to the school nurse or the delegated care aides. And I think those are the biggies. There was one more reference to Ashley's Law. Oh, in 830, visitors to and conduct on school property. This also brings in all of the cannabis language. So this is telling our visitors who come to our campuses that they are not allowed to be impaired or consume or possess or distribute cannabis, and that our legal rights to be able to remove those people from our drug-free safe school zones. And that is it. Questions?
Many more than usually we get.
Yes. I think it was because there were all those January 1st updates...
Oh, I see.
...related to, yeah, all of those new, yes. The cannabis, the mandated reporting, the sexual harassment with gender violence. There was one I didn't highlight in here specifically to the restroom change that we had to make, that update. So this basically is all aligning us with that new language.
Message to our legislators to...
Yes.
Kind of slow down on those unfunded mandates.
It is a lot. And there are more coming. I've been sharing with you guys the things that are currently in session, so there are quite a few.
Thank you.
Okay. So this will be on the next agenda for action as well?
Yes.
All right. We're ready for action items? We do have two tonight, personnel items and administrative personnel items. Are we ready to move forward, or is there something you want to talk about? We can do these as single motions, or we can do them as a motion for both items?
Motion for both items.
You're moving approval of...
Moving approval of the actual items.
Under consent process.
Under consent.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any objections to doing it as consent? Seeing none, roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Exum?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pelosi?
Yes.
Member Fisher, vote yes. Vice President Hall?
Yes.
President Dunham?
Yes. Motion's approved. Study topics, Summer Youth Employment Program 2020.
Okay. We're going to have Ms. Roster and Ms. Hanson and Ms. Medina from Care for You. So Ms. Roster and Ms. Hanson are from Urbana High School. They are our Summer Youth Employment Program coordinators. And Desiree Medina and Kelly are from Care for You, who we partner with to run this program. Kelly Anderson. So welcome.
Hello.
So I'm Ms. Roster, and I'm the Summer Youth Employment Coordinator.
I'm Beth Hanson, and I work with Amanda as the other coordinator.
I'm Desiree Medina, I'm the Urbana High School facilitator.
I'm Kelly Anderson, I'm the program manager of Care for You.
So the Summer Youth Employment Program is a program where kids that are in Care for You have the opportunity to go into this program for the summer. And we provide work experience, workforce readiness skills, training. We help them get a job, but we'll...
We'll talk about that later.
So just a brief history of our district, because this is similar to a presentation that we also gave last year. So the program started in 2015. That year, we started really late in April, but we were still pretty successful. We were able to place 25 students. The next year is when Care for You came into play, so we kind of ran our two programs side by side. But then at the end of that summer, we really had discussions and decided we had similar goals, and we'd have a much stronger program if we partnered together. Until then, the following year, we added on a partnership also with Unit 4, so we have one big career fair, and that's coming up in April. So all of the summer employment programs in the area have one career fair, which the employers really like, so that way they're not toting their stuff around. And then from then, we've kind of been running the program in a similar fashion. We've had a few new extra experiences thanks to Care for You. So we've been able to add on a youth conference in the fall, thanks to Care for You. And then last year in the spring, we were able to take the students to Illinois State University for an all-day field trip. We'll be doing that again this year. So this is our fourth official year of partnership with Care for You. We gained a new facilitator this year, Desiree, and we've loved having her. This summer, we have 51 students who will be eligible for their work experience, and then 11 students are interested in doing a Parkland option. So part of the Care for You grant is they can also take a class at Parkland. So that's just kind of a brief history of the program in our district. And then since then, we've been able to find 138 students' jobs over the summer.
So these are the qualifications, but in addition to these, it says they must complete 100% of Care for You sessions. We have sessions every week. The kids come in during their lunch period and work with us. Amanda does an hour, I do an hour, and then we have another co-facilitator that does another hour with Desiree. There's 20 sessions throughout the year, and the kids have to participate in each session or do a makeup with Desiree in order to get into the summer program. And then if you go down to the, what they have to submit, Amanda and I were just talking, we have a lot of kids like in the Congo and different areas, so they also have to provide their permanent resident card.
And that's just because we run the payroll through Regional Planning Commission, and they use the e-Verify system. So any student who we employ over the summer has to run through that system.
And then at the bottom, they have to be interviewed, and they must secure a job offer. We, in Care for You, we work on interviewing skills. The kids write resumes. Employers come in and work with the kids to critique their resumes, and then like Amanda said, they're given the opportunity to go to that one big career fair with the Champaign students.
Can I interject?
Yeah.
Excuse me. So students who don't link up with an employer at the career fair, that doesn't mean that they don't get a job for the summer, it just means that maybe the area that they're interested in working doesn't have a business who comes to the career fair. So between all of us and the Unit 4 person, we make phone calls, we reach out to employers. We're always trying to build our employer base, so we will find someplace for a student to work if they have a particular area of interest. We'll do our best. I mean, we are limited, but we do our best to do that.
So our SYEP, oh my goodness, program, we have a lot of beneficial information that we provide for our students throughout the whole year. We are currently working on job readiness and financial literacy this semester. So for the last several weeks, we've been teaching our students how to find a job and maintain a job. Like said before, we are creating resumes and how to go about asking people to be a reference, and we are doing, helping our students prepare for interviews, because they do have to go to an interview in order to get a job this summer. So we've been doing mock interviews during class, and we've just been teaching our students just basic soft skills, so good communication skills, problem-solving skills within the workforce, and then time management. At the beginning of the year, we do meet with students one-on-one, just to kind of see where they're at, get to know them, and see what kind of like careers they're interested in, just because we do try our best to place each student with something that they are wanting to do when they get older. And then as you can see, the rest of the semester, we will be spending time teaching our students how to calculate for a paycheck and how to open a bank account as well. So I think that we're all great at public speaking, but we know that you guys want to hear from students, so we wanted to invite three students who participated last summer to come up and share about their experiences. So we have, well, they'll introduce themselves.
So I just want to add, we are particularly proud of the students who work through our program. After this many years in the Champaign-Urbana communities, if our students say that they did Care for You, people are finally starting to realize that that means we have known these students for an entire school year. So we can really vouch for them. We can talk about their attendance, their dedication to the program, their work ethic, how they get along with other people. And so you can see that we have our friend that has on a Care for You polo shirt, this is something we provide to all of our students, so that they know that they at least have one shirt, that doesn't have to be ironed, that they could wear to a job interview if they made one. And then Delaney is wearing one of our T-shirts, and then Corvone is wearing an Urbana SYEP shirt, and this is like the Academy Awards, where we're talking about what everyone is wearing. I'll let you guys talk.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Gaines, and I participated in the Care for You program, and I was employed at the University of Illinois in the Music Building.
My name's Selene Wheeling. I was in Care for You, and then I got a job at the Champaign Park District's Prairie Farm.
Sorry. My name's Corvone Estes. I was in Care for You, and I was employed at the Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center, and the Crystal Lake Family Aquatic Center, outdoor pool.
Okay. Well, what benefited me, that kept working at the University of Illinois, I think it gave me perspective on like what I wanted to do, because like music, that's not it anymore. It was really good. It was like, it was a different environment than like school, or like the job I have now. Like you're still given adult responsibilities, but at another level, you're around college students that are in college that are like giving you advice and like trying to help you. I think that was like the, and like the thing I learned, like just because like, you know, you may love something that's not necessarily what you will want to do, and I think that helped me, that really helped me learn that. I think this program is actually really beneficial in like providing jobs and giving you perspective in what you want to do when you get older.
So being in Care for You definitely helped me get the job that I had. I don't think that I could have got it without them, especially since like everyone that I noticed that worked there, they seemed to have like a lot of qualifications that I didn't have. But like working and being around those people, it like, especially working with animals, I know I always wanted to do that, and it really helped me like find my passion, and now I really know what I want to do, and I couldn't have done that without Care for You.
Yeah. When working at the outdoor pool last summer, it was very fun. This program benefited me in a lot of ways that I didn't really think that I had in me, like, you know. When I was in this program, I didn't really think that there was not that many jobs that were for my age, because I always wanted to be, you know, a tech person, but then I ended up doing some research in the, in the program, so I looked into lifeguarding, and so I tried that out. It really benefited me, and it showed, it made me like meet new people and improve my communication skills and, you know, a lot of things, because I met some people that I didn't really think I could meet in my life, which is really, really amazing, because they're awesome, you know? Especially I had my actual dream job, you know, being a lifeguard at an outdoor pool, you know, I didn't think I could have, and it's a lot of, yeah, it was fun, and it benefited me a lot of ways. And like, I'm not very good at like explaining it, but as you can see, it's kind of, it's a lot. But I met a lot of great people at the outdoor pool, and I really appreciate everyone in this program that they got me where I'm supposed to be, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do you guys have any questions for them?
Any questions?
Any questions?
I think this young gentleman saved a life this summer too, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you.
It's reflected in the picture.
I remember that day. It was, I had to get right back in the chair, you know. Once you get in the water, you gotta get right back up, you know. It was pretty fun. It was scary, and I'm glad I was there.
They make you dig any frogs out of the pool?
Oh, actually, oh. Yeah, I actually jumped in to get a frog, it was because we wouldn't want it to lay in the water, you know, drown, so.
You said two lives.
Yeah, yeah, like animal lives, yeah.
I do have a question. Will you be returning to these jobs this coming summer? Or do you like graduate out of what you're doing in some way through the program?
I mean, we can reapply to these jobs, to these internships, but I don't, I don't, I'm not sure if we can, we can't go to Care for You again yet.
So Care for You is a federally funded program, and we're only allowed to serve each student one time. So these three students had their experience this past summer, but one of our goals is that they have learned the skills necessary to independently get their own employment this summer, whether it's returning to a job that they had last year where they've made a fantastic impression or something brand-new that they hadn't started, thought of before. Mackenzie said, you know, now she knows like maybe music isn't for her as far as a lifelong profession is concerned. But when she goes to apply for another position, and she is able to put on her resume or application, that she worked for the University School of Music last summer, that's going to say a lot to her next place of employment. So the hope is that what we've given them, they can keep using as they grow and develop as individuals. I'm actually still employed.
Oh, yeah. I'm still employed. I'm probably going to stick with the job until I, you know, graduate out of high school. It's a, it's a very fun job, and I met people that, you know, I made a bond with, and it's kind of hard to leave them, you know, so.
That's awesome. And we have employers who, the Urbana Library is a big employer for us, and if a student works out for them over the summer, then they have hired several of our students. I can't think of other places. I know there are more, but, yeah. I mean, our kids come to the workplace very well-prepared, in many instances, better prepared than some of their peers who haven't had this year of discussion groups and talking about these topics. And so, once they get into the workplace and start putting those skills to use, they just, they excel, so. I just wanted to say thank you for the program. I'm very happy to see so many different employers in our community in Urbana, not only Urbana, but also Champaign, who are seeing the value of teaching children from early on about responsibility and jobs, and that they can go to school administrators for help and get what they need to be able to succeed in the world. So thank you.
Well, I really appreciate Mackenzie's comments about the fact that you found out you didn't want to do something before you invested a ton of money working your way through education. These, these kinds of programs, job shadowing or actually having a job to where you really find out that, you know, finding out something isn't for you is as valuable as finding out something is, is for you.
When we put the students in a workplace for the summer, it's kind of like an immersion experience in another country. So they learn vocabulary, they learn what it's like to live in that world. And, and so they can say, "I don't ever want to go there again," or "I could live here for a long time." And so that's, what you said was really important.
No, I would love to work there again. I just don't think, like it was mostly an office setting, but like playing music.
Understood.
I can say from the employer's side, having run the University of Illinois Summer Youth Program for many years, that the Care for You students definitely come to the interview that I perform very well-prepared. You know, they're ready for the interview questions, they understand what we're asking, they understand that it's more than just giving a basic yes or no, but elaborating on the question and kind of really adding to what they have to offer to the campus. I always appreciate having the Care for You students come in, and we'll continue. I think we've partnered since your existence, and we'll continue that partnership and hope to have some of you, even Mackenzie. We, we interview outside of just Care for You, so you have another opportunity to interview and possibly get a job on campus and other places this summer as well. So keep up the good work, all of you coordinators, and keeping kids in the workforce.
And at the adult level, we at the RPC really appreciate the fact that when you put somebody on our payroll, it's, it's a smooth process. So we appreciate that.
I have a quick question about the employer's side. Since you've started the program, do you, are you finding that employers in the community are wanting, you're getting more people interested to jump on board? Because I remember a few years back, you were saying, "Well, we're trying what we can to get people interested in hiring our kids and creating those partnerships." Is it, is it gaining momentum?
Yeah, it's definitely gaining momentum, and it's to the point,
it's definitely gaining momentum, and it's to the point now where we have more employers than we have students, which is a great problem to have. So we have employers where, you know, we might not have a specific student who's interested. For example, maybe we don't have a student who's interested in journalism, so we don't need a placement at Deline Media. So we're at a really good spot with employers. And we've had many employers that have worked with us every year. So I think that really speaks to the students and the jobs that they do there.
Absolutely. That's great. Thank you.
Yes, we do. Yeah, it's more slides, so.
Thank you, students.
It was just a break from hearing us talk, so now you guys are back to us. So community partnerships, so clearly, this is really an example of Urbana Better Together. There are a lot of community partnerships that help this program for happening. Obviously, our biggest one is Care for You. And so they cover the actual wages over the summer that the students take home, and then they obviously help all school year with training and facilitation. Dan Moyer Boys and Girls Club is a partner. They're the ones who dispense the funds to Urbana School District. And then the Champaign County Health Board is the one who every year writes the grant with Tracy Parsons, and so they help get our funds. And then Champaign Regional, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission is our payroll agent. I feel like you guys probably have a pretty good understanding about the Care for You program and what else goes into it, so.
I do want to reiterate though, that we are primarily meant to be a relationship education program. That's what our funding is aimed at. The workforce readiness and financial literacy is just a little bit of icing on the cake. So encouraging students to have healthy, romantic relationships or partnerships is really what our program is pointed at. But that includes good communication skills, conflict resolution, things that also come to a job site. And I do want to just mention, we do get to know the kids. They start with us in September, and we finish with them in May. We do gather data to prove to the feds that our program is doing what we want it to do. And then in the summer, Amanda already mentioned, in addition to the workforce placement, they can also instead choose to take a class at Parkland. And our fund, our funds cover that up to a three-hours, three or four-hour class. And last year, we were able to also provide books, and we're hoping to be able to do the same thing this year. And we do family nights four times a year, the youth conference in the fall, the career fair. And then like Amanda said, last year, we were able to take our students to ISU. Our grant goes through ISU for a college campus visit, which a lot of our students did not imagine themselves on a college campus. So we had meetings with admissions, the trio folks were there. They saw dorms, they saw classrooms, they had lunch in one of the dormitories. And we've had several students, we've been doing some six-month follow-ups. Several students have said, "I'm going to ISU. I'm going to ISU in the fall." And, and part of that was that initial experience with visiting a campus.
So over the last four years, we've had over 40 employers. These are just a variety of employers, just because there are a lot of different things that our kids are interested, interested in, and we do want to fit them within the best employer. As you can see, there are some asterisks next to employers, and that just signifies that we have worked with them for many years.
So as far as financing goes, this is kind of where the ask comes in. So every year, we have been awarded a grant from the Champaign Mental Health Board, but because it's a grant, there's always a chance that it won't come through, and then we will need to fund the program in an additional way. So on the last slide, there's the numbers for you. So Care for You, they contribute, like I said, the actual wages for the students, but then what we always provide is the overhead costs. So just to run a student through the e-Verify system, there is a cost for that, and that's $160. And then this year, with the changes with the law with minimum wage, we decided in conversation with also YES, which is Unit Four's program, that we are going to pay our students $10 all summer instead of changing it halfway through. So because of that change, it also raises our overhead cost a little bit. So the cost per student is $483.02. I budgeted for 40 students to complete the program, just because we have 11 who are interested right now in Parkland. And unfortunately too, there's always a lot of opportunities for our students over the summer, so some students who think that they'll be doing it all year end up not. Or sometimes best-case scenario, we have employers who say, "You know what? We're just going to hire the student because we want them to work for us all summer." So that's why we budget for 40. So the ask that would, we would ask USC to cover if grant funding did not come through would be $24,320.80. And that also includes bus passes for the students. We give the students, if they request it, not every student does, but we also give them a bus pass for each month of the summer so they can get to work.
Amanda, when will you find out about your funding?
So unfortunately, that's always very late in the game. Usually, I honestly ended, attend a meeting like June 1st or 2nd about it. So it is usually pretty late in the game when we find out. But in talking with Tracy Parsons, he anticipates to be able to fully fund or partially fund. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, board questions.
No, and I guess the reason that you like to have this backup plan in case the funding didn't come through is that all, up until June, you've made obligations to employers and to students that, you know.
Yeah, and Care for You too. We always MOU with them as well, so.
So something that you will want to consider, Care for You funding was a five-year grant, and this is year five. So we have heard a forecast, they call it, that there will likely be funding available, but we have to reapply, we have to be awarded, et cetera. So as the Urbana program goes forward, just on your horizon, might be that possibility that we would sadly not exist. We've been extremely successful, but, you know, there could be 50 other programs out there who ask for the same money, and you know how that goes. So just, that's just kind of a heads-up for the future.
All right. So this study topic this evening, folks, so questions, and then I'm sure that our administration will take into consideration and bring something back.
This is for, does Champaign come up with a part of the money also, since it's kind of a combined?
So they fund their students fully, and then we fund ours fully.
Right. It's the same arrangement. There are some, there are some kids in Champaign who don't qualify for the YES program, and so those students, Care for You covers in the entirety. We pay for the administrative fee and their wages and everything, but it's the same arrangement. Is there a capital on how many you take, or? We haven't had to do that. There is, I mean, but we have, we have significant dollar amounts budgeted, and we have never even come close to that, so. How do you advertise in the schools about your program?
So we are always at centralized registration every year, and then in the spring, we have informational meetings during the students' lunch hours. And so a lot of times too, you know, it'll be me walking through the cafeteria, table to table, trying to get students to come to hear about the information. So it's not like they're necessarily referred to the program. There are times where we'll have counselors or teachers or case managers reach out to us and say, "Hey, I think this kid would be a great fit," and we definitely reach out to them and let them know when those dates are. But they self-select in, which I think is, speaks really strongly to that students want to be there, that they want to give out a lunch hour, that they are committing to the full year.
Thank you.
And so Care for You covers the salary cost, so the cost to the employer is the, is the cost that might be involved in mentoring and supervising the child, the student, but that is the extent. So have, have, with the possibility of the program having to be restructured if it's to continue, has there been any discussion with some of the employers as to what they might be willing to contribute?
I feel like I can pick out certain employers who would definitely want to continue the program with them funding it. The Park District is definitely one of those. A lot of times, the Park District will take our funds for the first 90 hours, and then they'll hire the student on, if they do a great job, for the rest of the summer or in some cases, the rest of the year.
We're looking at the employer picking up the administrative fee.
I said, "We fully fund ours on campus. We don't use any Care for You money for the university."
Good. Any employers interested in picking up the administrative fee so that in the instance when it is not funded from the grant?
That has not been in conversation we have with them, but definitely could be one.
Yeah. Just, I'm looking at all sources rather than just looking at us. All right. Thank you. This is an extremely valuable program. It's been operating for a while, and it's really good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next study topic is Apprenticeship and Career Technical Education update, which is kind of related to this. We just got finished.
So there was some, there's been some news media and just some coverage in our community about CTE programs and some of those career paths, apprenticeship paths. So I invited Mrs. Norton, and Ms. Rosser's going to stay, and Ms. Smith, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, to give us a little update about how we're doing in terms of CTE enrollment at our high school.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Iber Tatum said, tonight, we're going to talk about apprenticeship interns and CTE enrollment, some updates that we have. We will be referencing three handouts that you'll have. And if you look at the first one, that's the, oops, the enrollment trends chart. And then we'll also, you'll see an intern placements that we'll share. And then we have the healthcare program manual that we'll be sharing with you as well. And I asked Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Perez-Rosser to join me because they are directly involved with recruiting and connecting with our students, and I can't thank them enough for all the work that they have done to increase our numbers. So if you look at the first handout, the enrollment trends, you'll see that on the first page, we are down a little bit with small engine repair. That's one thing that I want to point out, but that's due to that we've added a new course, Automotive Technology 4, on the first page. So I'm just going to point out some highlights. On the back of that page, you'll see that welding has increased. It's doubled in size from 21 to 40. It's doubled in size from twenty-one to forty-two this year. Personal finance has increased by fifteen students, from one hundred and forty to one hundred and fifty-five. And Accounting One has doubled in size. It went from nine to eighteen. And then, if you look at the bottom, Child Development is down a bit. But, that's because we also added another new course, Human Development and Family Wellness, that we have twenty-two students that are in this year. We have forty-six students that are in Culinary Arts, and they've had a lot of success. They competed in the Chop Challenge. And then, they'll also be competing in a regional challenge at the U of I here soon.
So, just with the, like, fluctuation in numbers, a lot of times, it's one of those things happens that when we add one great course, teachers can only teach five courses a day. So, the numbers dip in another course. So, a lot of times, the fluctuation is due to us adding another option for our students.
Okay, and then, we have different certifications that our students can earn. We have with Advanced Childcare, Food Handler Certificate, Financial Literacy Certificate, and also Automotive. And students that take Auto One, Two, Three at the high school, and achieve a C or better, can earn college credits towards a Parkland Associate. And then, their senior year, they can continue and earn possibly twenty-five credits through Parkland towards their associate's degree.
So, I can just kind of explain each of those credentials to you. So, the first one, the INRA Level One. This is an industry-recognized certificate. So, students who complete one full year of Advanced Childcare and Development earn this certificate. The, all of the Family and Consumer Science teachers right now are trained to offer this certificate. And, it can qualify students for scholarships. It also looks really good. A lot of times, students who seek outside employment list down their resumes. And we have, right now, three students who are in Advanced Childcare and Development, who are also working at a daycare. And so, this certificate definitely helps them there. The Food Handler Certificate, we offer in culinary. And again, a lot of times, employers are required, are required to have the Food Handler's Certificate, or a certain number of staff who does. So, that also definitely helps our students. Even if they're not necessarily interested in going into culinary, I always say, when you do go to college, a lot of times, you work at a restaurant. And so, we think this is a really good one to give our students. And then, Everfy Financial Literacy Certificate. We offer this in our Independent Living and Co-op classes. And that one just basically walks them through budgeting, credit cards, financing higher education. And with that one, they can qualify for a scholarship at the end, if they write an essay. And then, the Parkland articulation, that's something that we're really, really proud of. Our auto instructor is actually at Urbana, but also teaches at Parkland. And so, that was really influential in this articulation. Students can earn a total of twenty-five college credits between UHS and Parkland towards an associate degree. So, that's huge, and something that we are so proud to offer our students.
So, some challenges and opportunities that we have is the agriculture vacancy, and the teacher shortage that we've had this year. The good news is, there's some alternatives for licensure. We have individuals that can receive credit toward their workforce, if they have two thousand hours in a particular area in the workforce, in addition to a college degree. Some examples, some SIP codes, if they can get our key areas, such as welding, or it could be Family and Consumer Sciences, and then, they can obtain that licensure to teach. And we do have three teachers that have taken advantage of that, and are quite successful this year.
And even though we were not able to fill one position, we had, at the end of last year, four CTE positions open, which is a lot. We had a lot of turnover due to retirement, and increased FTE. And we were able to fill three of those positions. And so, that's definitely something that we should be proud of.
So, some internship opportunities that our students have available. Some of the key areas are elementary education, journalism, theater, engineering, excuse me, coronary, business, and nursing, and also veterinary medicine as well.
So, one of my other job hats, so one of my job hats is Summer Youth Employment. One of my job hats is Career and Technical Education Department Chair. And then, the third one is Executive Internship Coordinator. And so, this is my first year being CTE Department Chair and Executive Internship Coordinator. And so, this year, we have eleven students that we were able to place in the community. And it's truly based off of what they want to do. Similar to kind of what Mackenzie said, we had one student this year who was not necessarily loving one of her experiences. And so, we were able to switch her, and she's much happier in her second placement. And so, this is a wonderful program, where second semester students can take two periods off, and they can go to a workplace during the day. And next year, I'm hoping to increase my numbers to fifteen to twenty. So, I'm really looking to grow the program. Right now, I have about thirty-one students interested, so we're hoping that we'll be able to do that.
Ms. Perez, is this the program, like, what Ms. Sherrick used to run? Okay, that's what I thought. I think this is great. And I know my daughter had an experience in the program, and she really loved it. It really helped her immensely.
Okay, and then, we have our Health Care's program that we would like to share with you. This is the third year that we have this program. And you can see some of our community partners. We have the goal this year of having fifteen students, and we surpassed that goal, and we have twenty-one. So, we're really proud of that. Like Mrs. Perez-Rosser, Mrs. Smith can be found in the cafeteria recruiting kids. So, she's been working very hard through this program this year.
Okay, good evening. I wanted to first say, career readiness is the process of preparing the students, so that they can acquire the skills that they need, develop those relationships within the workplace, but also grow through their opportunities. This year, I had the pleasure of being the district coordinator for the Healthcare Careers Program. And what we do is, we partnershiped with the Chamber of Commerce, Champaign County Chamber of Commerce. The students have various requirements. It is a very rigorous process, too, in the beginning. So, some of the requirements are, they do have to complete an application. They do have to submit their physicals, their ID, some of the things they need to do on their own, immunizations. And yes, it is a task keeping up with high school students, but yet, a joy getting to see them on a daily basis. Each student completes sixteen or more rotations in the five places. All they have to do is four of those, and that is Carl Clinic, Christie Clinic, Clark Lindsey Village, OSF Healthcare, and Promise Healthcare. After each rotation, the students are given a review on how their progress was during that rotation. But also, the students have to write an essay. It's just a reflection essay of what did they learn during this rotation. They just had their Chamber of Commerce Soft Skills Seminar on February the twenty-fourth. It was a one-hour seminar. And it really covered the seven soft skills that were identified through the Chamber of Commerce. The first one is leadership skills, teamwork, communication, problem-solving, critical thinking, professional work ethic. That was an interesting one, especially during the wintertime, because they could not wear boots, cannot wear boots in the health field facilities. Number six is flexibility, and then, number seven is interpersonal skills, which teaches them to give constructive criticism, but also receive constructive criticism, criticism on how they can do their job better. At the end of every rotation, they do do a survey, and it asks, did the students show up on time? Was the student dressed appropriately? Was the student engaged? So, talking to them, having a conference about what it means to be engaged. Did they ask questions, and what is their overall rating? Every time they complete a rotation, every time they complete a rotation, the UHS coordinator meets with the students, so that they know how they did on that rotation, so they can go to the next rotation and learn from their errors, if there were any. Their final presentation will be on Wednesday, May the thirteenth, at five-thirty at Parkland College. Each one of them have to do a PowerPoint presentation about what are their skills, the knowledge that they learned on their job this year. This year's uniqueness was, the program is usually contained to just one semester. And this year, it went from September, and it will be completed in May. And this is all volunteer. So, the students get to sign up for the rotations when there are no school days, on the weekends, in the evenings. It's been very, they have been very proactive, innovative, about working around sports and other things that they may have, and other commitments to as well. We, we started off with twenty-nine. We ended strong, right now, with twenty-one. We did have an early graduate. And then, some of them just realized that it was a little bit too much juggling the sports, and then, work schedules, family schedules, and we understand those needs, too, as well. So, there are seventeen females and four males. And yes, we do have fifteen juniors and six seniors. One was a December graduate. Currently, right now, Ms. Sandra Goodrum is the UHS High School Coordinator, who meets with the students on a daily or a weekly basis. She meets with them during third hour, or she finds them in the lunchroom. Also, the Urbana High School Administrator is Dr. Janice Nolan. She helps, coordinates, and she meets with Sandra every week as well. I did coordinate also, also with Amanda Perez-Rosser. And I said, I need some students for this program. So, we were able to collaborate and make sure that we meet the needs of the student population in Urbana High School. We also just wanted to say, you know, this couldn't have been successful without the students, without the families, without the Urbana High School administration as a whole, and then, also without central office support as well.
What questions do you have for me?
And this is my first year taking on this.
Are you ready for questions?
Yes.
Okay. Board members' questions?
Do you, do you expect this program to change much next year? I mean, especially as the healthcare career seems pretty comprehensive. Do you expect it to continue in the same manner next school year? Is that the expectation?
So, last year, they had eight students. They were a part of the program. And what we tried to do was make sure, we went to biology classes, we went to CTE classes, we went in the lunchroom, and tried to get a variety of students. Because some students don't know the opportunities that are out there. So, right now, we are at twenty-one, and that's a pretty good number to handle.
Yeah.
And so, it just depends on what the support looks like next year.
And just the other kind of related question, it just seems, I was just impressed with how you have this Healthcare Careers Program structured, because it's sort of built-in feedback loop for students. I mean, it has a variety of placements, so they really could get a good feel for what the healthcare field looks like. You're working with elderly, working with, you know, hospitalized people and so forth. And then, you have this kind of built-in feedback loop, each at, at short intervals, so they really can kind of get feedback. Are any of those mechanisms built into the other career internships that we have? That kind of feedback loop on a regular basis, you know, for the other intern placements?
So, we do a midsemester check-in, which I just sent that survey out to employers, and then, we'll review it with the students. But, the sponsors also know. And same thing for summer. Summer, we do a midsemester, or midsummer check-in.
Okay.
But, the employers or sponsors also know. If there's issues, they always reach out to me, and then, we problem-solve them together.
So, you feel like that really is, that's working?
Yeah, I feel like that's pretty comprehensive. I would also say, too, for us, with sponsors and employers, we try not to have them do, like, you know, weekly reflections on the students, or something like that, because we also want to be respectful of their time.
Sure.
Do the, do the students have to do, like, weekly reflections to you? And do they get high school credit for participating in this?
For executive internship or healthcare careers?
Which one? The executive internship, I guess?
So, executive internship, yeah. They do get course credit. They get, it depends on how many hours they do at their placement. So, if they, are there seventy hours, they get one course credit. And if they're, they're a hundred and forty hours, they get two course credits. And then, what was the other part of your question?
Just, do they have to write, like, a weekly report or anything, too, about what they've done that week?
So, yeah, so I have a Google Classroom. And so, we alternate between, they have interviews that they have to conduct. And so, they have an informational interview, and they have an organizational interview that they have to conduct. And then, we do, once a month, a flip grid, where they have to respond to a question that I post. A flip grid, for those of you who might not necessarily know what it is, is a video recording. And then, they have to go back, and they have to comment on their classmates' recording. So, for example, the one in February was about time management and balance. So, what are some of your strategies? And it's really cool to watch the students, and then, see their responses to their classmates. For example, they'll be like, oh, that's a great idea. You know, you color-code your to-do list in green, yellow, and red. I'm going to definitely borrow that. And then, they have to do one reflection post a month, and then, they have to respond to their classmates.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? For your executive internship, do you still have a community board?
We do have a community board. So, we meet once a year, so we met this past fall.
Long time ago, my wife was chair of that board.
Wow.
So, the program's been around for a while.
Yeah, we have a lot of great community-supporting partnerships as well.
In concert with what I asked the prior group, what's the involvement of the employers in the medical careers in particular? Are they just program participants and provide a space? Or have they also helped to enhance the program through any financial involvement?
Well, we are just in the third year of the Healthcare Careers Program. And so, the Champaign County Chamber of Commerce does a lot of that collaborative partnership. This is a volunteer basis for the students, so they don't get paid for any of their hours. So, we haven't talked about any money.
Now, some other things that we want to explore. I know Brenda asked, do they get credit for, for the healthcare internship? They do not right now. And it's a rigorous process. They have a portfolio that they have to do. There's a lot involved. And I'm just going to highlight that here at the end. But, we want to explore more with competency-based education. And with the healthcare internship, that would be a perfect opportunity for the students to defend their work, so that they could get credit for that. That isn't something that we have explored here yet. One thing that we want to do, and we've met with Dr. Berenson as well, is we really want to make sure that we have the department heads around the table. And we really look to see, what are some other ways that we can provide our students with credit besides traditional seat time? Because there's other things that they can do as well, to, to gain that experience. So, that's something that we're going to be tapping into further. Urbana was part of a competency-based pilot in two thousand and eighteen, but we just need to get that rolling further. And we just, the main thing is, we need to have key people around the table.
Thank you.
All right, further questions?
I was going to make a comment. So, I wanted to thank you guys. My son is part of the Healthcare Professionals internship program. And they, when Ms. Smith says, there was a lot of back and forth with students. They, I mean, if you look in the booklet on page six, and I'm, and I'm glad now. At the time, it was taking him back and forth to do all these things was a little trying. But now, in light of the influenza and all the things that are happening with the flu in the community, I see why they're so stringent on the requirements for the vaccines and, and everything. So, unfortunately, by the time he got everything in, basketball season was really in, in full swing. So, he is going to be working really hard in the next two months to get his rotations done. But, he's looking forward to it. So, I just wanted to applaud you guys for your work and effort, and Ms. Goodrum, too. All the emails, and tracking down students, and Dr. Nolan, you know, checking off. You know, we had to go for a session at Carl. So, it, it is a very involved process, considering they don't get, you know, they're, they're not getting credit, and they're not, there is no money involved in the amount of work that the students have to put into it. So, I, I just wanted to say, I appreciate you guys for the effort that you, I mean, growing our number from eight to twenty, even the twenty-one we're still in is huge in one year. So, kudos to you guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our final study topic, thanks, folks, for waiting until now to get it up here, is from Arbor Management, our operator of our food services.
So, I'm going to let, Carol, you want me to introduce, or do you want to introduce your peeps?
I just want to welcome you guys. This is Arbor's first year with us, so this is their first presentation to the board. But, we wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to come in front of you. And thank you guys for the samples.
We got to sample some of the food that they have served in our, in our schools, and it was very good, so.
Thanks for dinner.
Yeah.
There's plenty of leftovers.
So we have Jonathan Schmidt, who is our food service director, who is actually on site here at the middle school. Kathy Tentler is the district.
Vice, Vice President of Operations.
Operations, sorry. And Jada is operations.
I'm the district manager.
Manager.
It's confusing.
She's here a lot though, I have to say. They both are, so we appreciate all their help.
Yes.
So I will turn it over to you guys. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you for letting us come and, uh, review our lunch program and, or our food service program. Um, like Carol mentioned, this is our first year here, and I know that you had your previous, um, company here for many years, so that's not always an easy feat, you know, when you have to, uh, take over from another company that's been here for a long time. So, um, we have a really good, uh, partnership with Carol and Linda. We meet regularly and, uh, we review things and we try to address things and respond accordingly, um, and quickly. So, uh, matter of fact, we have a meeting at eight-thirty tomorrow morning, so. Uh, as Carol mentioned, we brought some samples. Uh, we just wanted to make sure that we were able to at least offer some of the options that we serve at each grade level. We have different menus, as you'll see in the presentation. We have several different menus that we offer depending on the grade level, and, um, we wanted to at least bring some samples. And everything there is whole grain. It meets the nutritional guidelines required by the state, which as everybody knows are pretty strict, um, although they are leaning back a little bit on the whole grain. So we'll see what we can get away with on as far as, uh, the pizza crust and things like that, that the kids really don't like whole grains. So, uh, we're working on updating our menus for next year to, um, incorporate some of the changes that we're able to do, to, to get a, a better perception of the food. Um, but other than that, we just are happy to be partners and, um, hope, hopefully to continue that. And, uh, Jada here, who's the district manager, who oversees Jonathan, and Rose Curtis is the assistant. She's not here tonight, um, but she does a great job as well, so. But Jada will take over with, uh, the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to come tonight. We're very excited to share with you what we do on a daily basis that, um, I think heavily influences our students' days, so. Um, it started in August. Um, I'm gonna try to make this a fairly swift presentation because I know it's getting late. But the transition was, uh, rather smooth, I feel. It was, uh, very swift, busy. Um, but again, a very, very good transition. Our focus is on food, freshness, um, variety, local produce, making sure that we are meeting the national school lunch program guidelines, and really trying to, uh, provide our students with healthy nutritious meals that will push them towards a great learning environment during the day, and even, even during the evening. Um, menus and testing new recipes, we're doing that often. Obviously, we do menus every month, and lots of them. Um, we try to incorporate new and exciting menu items that, that the kids might see out, um, in just eating in their, uh, local areas, Chipotle. Uh, we try to mimic some of the things that they do because I know the, the students really like those. Um, we also do, um, health and safety for our, our employees so that we are making sure that the environment that they're working in, um, and servicing the children in are, uh, it's, it's up to code. And again, we try to have fun because we think it's important. Again, the transition was great. Uh, we did take on a fair amount of the employees that were, uh, existing. Um, I can't exactly remember how many, but it was a majority of them. We hired several new employees, and as always, that's always a continuing, um, struggle. However, um, we might like to partner with, uh,
Yeah.
the, the group that we were just, uh, listening to because that would be a great, uh, a great learning experience. And we do, um, offer culinary, um, classes as well in other districts. So that might be something that we can partner with in the future. Just, that wasn't part of my presentation, but I thought I would, would offer that. So again, our focus is on food, and if you have had the pleasure of going into any of our buildings, you will notice that there is a, a large variety of color. We like to see a lot of color, fresh fruits and vegetables. Um, we offer some odd things that may not be offered in some locations because we feel that the students here are receptive of new things. So, um, you will see in some of our, uh, mainly the high school, because they're older, um, we do serve some hummus. Um, we are doing some variety of, uh, plant-based options as well, which we'll get to. Um, fresh. Every day we, we prepackage grab-and-go items, as you will see in the left-hand corner. That is at our high school. We want to make, uh, the eating experience for the students, um, as good as possible. And we try to look at it from a, a student's perspective and a consumer's perspective. So whatever we feel looks good, tastes good, then usually the kids like it. So a lot of grab-and-go, salads, fresh options, uh, fresh baked homemade pizzas daily, which you were able to try a little bit of. Um, so those, those are important, and we try to also incorporate things that the kids really, really like. And usually that's pizza, um, fresh takes on burgers, uh, chicken sandwiches, salads, wraps. Um, we have a fresh made-to-order deli at the high school. We, at the middle school, offer, um, about twelve different items a day at the high school. I would guess about fifteen to seventeen, depending on which day. Those are main entrees. Um, at the elementary schools, we have four options per day, which are rotated on a five-week cycle. Um, again, variety, a lot of fresh fruits and vegetables. Again, color. We want a lot of color. Um, we do local produce, so we partner with the Department of Defense, and we absolutely do the locally grown produce. We do Central Illinois produce, um, we partner with them. And we, we do have, oops, I skipped ahead there a little bit, sorry. Um, the Department of Defense is, um, we're required, or the district is required every year to use a certain amount of dollars, um, funded by, um, the government and by the state. So a portion of that is used for fr- our fresh fruits and vegetables. Menus, this is, um, a bit hard to see, but I wanted you to see a little bit of an overall view. This is our middle school menu. So we have two rotating hot items every day, and then a variety of fresh grab-and-go goes, chicken sandwiches, burgers, the fun stuff the kids like. Um, pizzas, wraps, and I'm thinking if they can't find something on this menu, uh, to eat, there, there could be a problem. But, um, again, just wanted you to see the overall view of our menus. Um, we do offer, um, I believe we have nine menus right now. And the reason there are nine are because there are, uh, a few menus that are translated into French and Spanish um, for, uh, our growing population of, uh, international students. I mentioned the plant-based options. Um, this is really new and exciting. We've really been, uh, we really want to try to offer items that we may not be converting a child from a, a regular burger to a, a vegetarian, plant-based burger, but we want to have that option for those students who do choose to eat, um, a vegetarian meal. So we do rotate these items weekly, uh, or daily in the week, and we do have a plant-based vegetarian burger offered daily at the middle and high school levels. These are two of the options. One is a chickenless bootable, and the other is a lentil pasta marinara. They're tasty. I like them. Again, um, we try to focus on fun because this is the one point in time of a student's day where they can kind of relax, um, take a break from their studies, and really enjoy being, just having their own time to do kind of what they want. Kinda. Um, but we also want to try to, to promote our, our meal program and to make it a little fun. So, um, for instance, we do, uh, birthday treats monthly. Um, we do have one day a month where every student who comes through to purchase a, a meal gets a birthday cookie. We celebrate it at the, the register. Um, we did, I'm sorry, I skipped the opening week promotions. Uh, opening week was a little hectic, but we did do a lot of giveaways and the kids were really happy. We did speakers, pedometers, um, jump ropes, I'm sorry, um, just a variety of fun things, just to get them excited to be dining with us. Um, we did Valentine's Day doughnuts, big, big hit. Those are whole grain doughnuts, by the way. Um, so.
The icing would fly.
Yeah, oh, I kinda, but the kids just loved them. Those are for breakfast. Um, and we did, we also did the Thanksgiving Day feast where we served, um, the students and parents of the district, which went over phenomenally. We cooked a lot of turkey that day. Um, and again, we are, we have a lot of upcoming promotions as well. We are focused on our student satisfaction, um, and this is where I'll turn it over because I talk a lot. Um, I'll allow Jonathan to just speak really quickly about our student focus groups, um, which we have conducted at the middle and high school level. Elementary is coming up. It's a little harder to get a student focus group with first and second graders, but we still like to entertain them and their questions.
Yeah, so, I mean, recently I did a couple focus groups. Um, mainly I'm in the schools every day, so I get to interact with the students on, on a daily basis. Um, I get a good idea of what they like or don't like by their reactions. It's, it's pretty obvious, especially at the middle school and the, and the, and the earlier levels. But, uh, the focus groups just gives me a, a good chance to sit down and spend a little more time with them, get a little more in depth. The high school students were very forthcoming, gave me a lot of good feedback, a lot of good information. The middle school students, you kind of gotta draw it out of them. They're not, they don't, they don't share quite as much. But, you know, basically we're looking for what do they like, what don't they like, how do they feel about the service, what would they like to see more of. And, um, we got some great feedback from them, had some very positive feedback. So it was very helpful, and I look forward to doing it again really soon with the elementary students and see what else we can find and see how we can, you know, work with them together to build something that they really enjoy, so.
And I think a lot of, a lot of it is just about communication with the students. You build relationships, you get to know their names. Um, and we will try to give them what they want, as long as it's within the guidelines. So sometimes that's hard to understand when you're, uh, you know, a student and parent, and all of us. It's, it, the National School Lunch Program's a little difficult to understand, but, but we try to inform them so they're, they have a better understanding of what we do. Um, we also have a quarterly business meetings, um, with Jennifer, um, Carol, and Linda that we have a fair amount of, of feedback, I think, from parents, students, teachers. And what we want to do with that feedback is, uh, take it in a positive ma- manner and make changes, um, as they are brought to our attention. So, um, and I think we've done a pretty good job of that. We have changed, um, at the elementary level for breakfast. Uh, we did have some parents that were concerned with doughnuts, chocolate doughnuts, chocolate milk, you know. I understand that, I'm a parent. Um, so we did change to white milk at breakfast, um, at the request of, of the district, and, um, no more doughnuts, except for on Valentine's Day. That was it. Um, but there are healthier oper- uh, options. Um, not saying that the doughnuts aren't healthy, it's perception because the doughnuts actually have less sugar than what other things do. But, um, again, we want to make everyone happy as best as we can. Health and safety, um, we, again, I'll, I'll go over this quite quickly, but we do have a health and safety program that all of our, our, um, employees participate in. They walk through our safety, um, stop, uh, standard training operating procedures manual. We call it the STOP manual. And that is, uh, where they learn about, um, food safety, sanitation, work environment safety, any, any type of, of safety concerns that would be, uh, relevant, we teach them yearly, and we do this twice a year. Um, we also have risk consultants, uh, risk, risk controls consultants, if I can speak. Um, the Zenith Company, they actually came into our schools and assessed the schools themselves and gave us a report on some potential safety concerns that we, we have addressed, so that, that has been completed. Um, more fun to come. March, right now we're cele- celebrating a National School Breakfast Week, and it's, uh, out of this world. That is our theme. And we are also celebrating National Nutrition Month, which we will be introducing a, a variety of different fruits and vegetables. Um, we're going to introduce jicama, uh, clementines, and beet sticks. They're really good. I promise. Then in April, we're going to, uh, Jonathan is going to conduct, uh, the first focus group with the elementary students. Um, that will ob- obviously give us opportunity to, to discuss what, uh, it is that they like, and I know what that is. Chicken nuggets, uh, chicken strips, chicken, chicken, chicken. Um, and then May, we're gonna be celebrating, uh, the end of the school year with some, some promotions, uh, and picnic-type menu items. So again, just trying to stick with themes and make it just a tad bit fun. Um, again, we are so glad to be here. We have had, uh, it's, time has flown by, let's just say that. And it's never a dull moment in our schools, but we love it. Very exciting. Students are, are fantastic, and the administrators and teachers and staff have been great as well. So, thank you so much.
Any questions for us?
Questions?
Um, can you tell me more about the changes made at the elementary level? I think the, the concerns that I heard most as a board member came from the elementary level. You talked a little bit about the doughnuts, um, which were pretty high carb, high sugar.
Right.
Along with the chocolate milk and juice and chocolate crackers and, um, kind of a lack of options for a more healthy choice. Um, so what replaced the, the chocolate on chocolate, I guess I'll call it?
So again, we did the white percent, uh, the one percent white milk and then skim white milk, um, as part of the National School Lunch Program. You have to have two varieties. It doesn't necessarily mean that it had, uh, the fat content has to be different. So it doesn't necessarily mean that, um, we had to have chocolate and white. That was just something that has always been done, so we continued with that. Um, we replaced the chocolate doughnuts with a whole grain bagel and cream cheese, which, um, you know, the kids love doughnuts. You, you, what do you do? So, but I, I think it's still a good option. So, um, we also made changes to the cereals, and all of the cereals that are offered are low sugar. Reduced sugar.
And, and we are working, um, currently on next year's menus. You know, Arbor is working on the cycle menu, so part of that is breakfast. Um, we do a lot of, uh, breakfast in the classroom, cold breakfast, and that, there's not as ma- many options unfortunately. Um, so we are trying to revise that, come up with different ideas, little smoothies maybe once a week, um, different things like that, so that there's more protein-based and less package-y type stuff. But unfortunately, with the program being as it is, it's hard to find that variety. And so the vendors, I'm, I'm constantly going to food shows, grabbing whatever I can to figure out what we can do to revise our menus. So we are working on next year's menus, and we continue to try and make changes as we see that products become available.
Is there ever a fruit option for breakfast?
Yes. Fruit is offered every day.
Okay.
We, well, you must offer fruit.
Banana or something like that, or?
Well, it's on the menu, so.
Yeah, typically, typically apple, oranges. Um, bananas are tough sometimes because they're either overripe, underripe. You, once you get them just right, you know, it's the weekend, so.
Yeah.
We, we try with the bananas, but, um, but there are other options. Um, some of the, uh, produce that we get in from DOD, you know, we can probably come up with some other fresh fruit, maybe have like a fresh fruit day where it's more of a cut-up fruit rather than an apple or an orange, which is pretty typical, so. Um, you know, but fresh fruit must be offered at breakfast. That's part of the requirements as well.
Um, also, in addition to what's on, as far as the lunch menu is concerned, um, we have started to offer fresh fruit baskets every day at the elementary level. We've always done that at the, um, middle We've always done that at the, um, middle school and high school level, but we menued what was at the elementary, but now we have added the extra fruit basket.
So that they have a choice rather than you're getting an orange today whether you like it or not.
Right, so then they can, they can grab what they want. And, and juice, yeah, juice is limited.
Well, thanks, I've had the lunch at the high school and have, I usually get the salad, kinda make my, I've always enjoyed that, so. Appreciate the changes at the elementary level. I think for a while, they kinda felt a little slighted that the options were at the middle and high school level and that they kinda were not getting as good of a variety, so appreciate that change.
Right, we'll continue to work towards that and figure out different ways serving. You know, every school's a little bit different, the way they're set up or what, what the facilities are there that we can work around. But, um, you know, we'll continue to work as a group to determine different ways that we can offer different varieties and.
We definitely do not wanna be boring.
Thank you.
Other questions? Paul?
Uh, thank you for a really good presentation. I also wanna concur that I've had a meal at the middle school and it was really, really good. Uh, but, uh, it's a nice qualitative presentation, but I was wondering if you had any quantitative data with regards to how many meals you've been serving in each of our levels throughout the year? We've had that data in the past to give us indication on how well we're doing with our, uh, you know, free lunch parole programs. If there's metrics we have to meet.
Right, right. Um, I know that we are, we are very close on target for what we were serving last year. I don't have those, that data in front of me, but I can certainly present that the next, at the next meeting. Um, we are a bit higher than we were, but it's not by hundreds of meals per day. So, we're, we're very-
We just briefly looked at the claims versus what it was last year, so we didn't put together anything, uh, to present. But, uh, just to, we do monitor that, um, every month and determine where we're at with meals and where we're losing meals, where we're gaining meals. So, um, we can definitely put something, something together to present for the next meeting or whenever we're invited back or provide it to Carol and.
Sure, I was gonna say even just a one pager maybe and we can just share it.
Sure, mm-hmm.
Okay, so you don't have to come back, we can.
Right, right.
Sure, we can certainly do that.
So when I was a kid, I didn't eat beets, I love them now, but you're gonna serve beet sticks and you're gonna get kids to eat them. Do you tell them what it is before they taste it and then you tell them, or?
Yeah. So we do have some taste testings, yeah, we do some testing, uh, tastings and we do little plastic, you know, or paper cups and, um, you know, beet sticks or, I love beets, I know I'm a weirdo. But, uh, the jicama is great.
Jicama's very good.
And, um, I just think it's, it's important that, that we introduce our, our students to different things. And they may not at first think it's odd, but try it.
More power to you if you can make it happen. I'm, it's joking, Paul took my question. I, I, we, we really need to be monitoring, um, the impact on the district budget and how that works because I know that the district budget changes depending on the meal participation rate.
Okay, sure, we'll get you the information.
Appreciate it, yeah, even if you're close, that's, that's important for us to know.
Yes.
There wasn't any drop off and as a matter of fact, there's maybe a slight increase. And increases in meal counts is, uh, in a district of our size is measured in very small, slight amounts. Have a question, Ruth Ann.
What, if anything, are you finding? Because I'm hoping you're monitoring the garbage to know what's getting thrown out regularly. And have you already done something like that, made adjustments? Is it just certain things at, like at the elementary schools that the little kids aren't liking compared to what might be getting thrown out automatically? Or ta- or taking it onto their trays or whatever, thinking they're gonna try it and then it wasn't just, just, it wasn't tasteful for them or something? I mean, that's what we need to have as feedback as well.
Okay, um, I know, uh, part of our training with our leads at each building and then with Jonathan and Rose is talking to the students or seeing what it is they're not eating. You know, sometimes you can walk around, we try and suggest doing table visits, just stopping by kids. How does that taste today? How do you like it? Uh, as far as the garbage, I don't know if they've been checking into that. I know that we do share tables so that if they do, since it's offered versus served, they don't have to take all the components. They can choose what they want as long as they minimally have a fruit or a vegetable and two other items on their tray that, um, composes of a reversible meal. So we try and encourage them to take as much, you know, 'cause otherwise they're going to take minimal. Um, but it, since it's offered versus served, they don't, they don't have to take everything, they can make choices. You know, that's what the program's about. Um, but as far as monitoring the garbage or what's going in the garbage, I don't know if that's really been, you know, we have the shared tables where they can place things on there if they're not going to eat them.
We haven't been monitoring garbage, but we do, we do pay attention to, you know, what they're eating. I will walk around in the cafeteria and look and see what's on their plate, what they have been eating, what they're not eating, just to get a better general idea. But, a lot of times, they have choices, so they're, they're not forced into taking stuff they don't want, there's a lot of choices. Um, but I think the shared tables have been very popular for the kids that maybe don't wanna take the fruit or the vegetable and they take it and it goes to the shared tub. It's been very successful at the middle school. Um, there's a, there's a lot of kids that need more food and want more food and we encourage them to take as, as much as they want from that. And, uh, it's usually pretty empty by the end of, by the end of lunch and stuff that's put in there, the milks, the juice, the fruit. It's usually almost all gone at, at the middle school level and at the high school level, um, it gets pretty good usage as well, so. Uh, elementary kids are a little more picky, it's a little more difficult to get them, you know, to actually eat the fruit or the vegetables every day. But at the, at the middle school and at high school level, they're doing a pretty good job of eating what, what they get or putting in the shared tables for other students to eat.
The other thing, um, that we do monthly is we do review of the menus that are, are cycle menus. And we ask the leads and we can look at the data and see what is a popular item and what is not a popular item. So, and in different areas, different things are more popular than others. So whereas spicy foods may go over well in some areas and others, it's the homestyle meals. So yes, we do keep track of what the students like. We try to have that, uh, something available for them every day that they like. There's gonna be certain things that, uh, it's not gonna be popular like beans, but we're required to menu those at least a half a cup, um, each week on the menu. So if you see beans, it's not because we think the kids like them. Um, for the most part, it's just a requirement that we have to have that, so.
I've got another question about allergies.
Yes.
John just finished saying, do you tell them that they're not beets and let them have a taste of it? I've had allergy, food allergies all my life and that scared me to death when he said that. Because if we have some, but some kid that is grabbing something and they're not aware that might be something that they're actually allergic to and maybe the parents-
Right.
Tell them they can't have it at home and then they see something that might be disguised, the way John's talking about it, it's like-
I didn't say disguised.
Not tell them what it is, okay, that, that just kinda threw me, so do you-
Yeah.
Are there parents that have gotten in contact with you? Do they do that through the front office, you know, make sure my child is not having this on, on the food line, so on and so forth? What are we doing in that area?
Um, generally, that goes through the school nurse and then there is a, uh, protocol. Um, once it is known that there's some sort of allergy, there is a doctor's statement that needs to be completed and then the nurse passes that along to us and then that goes through our dietitian who has to determine if it's a, um, if it's a disability or, uh, just a, an allergy and then we determine what, what, uh, what we're gonna replace it with. Usually it's milk, um, obviously there's not, so we don't offer anything that's even manufactured in a facility that can't guarantee that it hasn't been, um, used for, uh, the lines have been used for other peanut type things, so. Um, but typically, yes, the, the parents don't contact us directly, they have to go through the nurse. The nurse then has to provide a statement and then they have to bring that to their doctors and then that goes through that.
It's good to know-
Yes.
For everybody who's tuning in or will be watching the video or something like that, that this isn't just putting food on a tray and handing it to a kid.
Yeah, and it's-
There's more science behind it.
At that, it, it is in Skyward too, so we can print out their page and like if a kid is allergic to strawberries, everybody in the lunchroom, there's a binder with, you know, with a picture of the child and so lunchroom supervisors, principals are supposed to be aware of those things and providing that.
Yeah. And, and if a parent ever does want to ask what's in a recipe, they can most certainly call Jonathan or Rose. We can read the labels for them, um, we can look at the nutritional breakdown of it. So, and list all of the allergens that are in there, so. Um, but as far as a, a regular basis, it usually goes through the, the school nurse and then, but they're more than welcome to contact us for ingredients.
One more question, Peggy, are you good?
No, no, go ahead.
What do you think of our facilities? Are you liking cooking at our places or what?
Absolutely, yes, the high school is awesome.
Yeah.
I, they're all are, but the high school, the high school, it's, it's one of the best that I've seen. And I've been doing this for twenty years, so, um, it's really a nice, a nice facility. Um, but no, it's nice, I know there's a couple that need a few things, you know, but that's pretty typical, you know, we've- That's like any food service, you just kinda work towards, towards goals and what needs to-
But I think at this point, we have pretty, everything that we need except more employees, so.
So if anybody that's listening-
Would like to reply. But we've been very happy with, with the facilities and the staff that we do have and the support that we've received from the, the school district. We've been extremely happy, very, very responsive of any, uh, type of, uh, questions or issues. It's been a, a very good partnership.
Wonderful.
Peggy?
And I, yeah, I have a, a question. Um, I'm glad you're conducting focus groups at, uh, middle and high school and soon elementary school. Cause like Tori, when we had our recent meetings at each of the schools, there were a couple of concerns that came up at the early childhood and elementary level about sugary cereals and not enough fresh fruit.
Right.
So it sounds like you'll get at that a little bit more. Um, but, but I should say too, that there was comments made that people at the schools said they really appreciate how responsive you've been when there have been concerns that you've got back, got back to them, you know, with a solution and that was greatly appreciated, so. Um, I was wondering when you, in your recent focus groups at the middle and high school, what, you know, what's one or two ideas you got or feedback you got that you could, that was beneficial?
Well, you know, mainly, um, they, they told me, they told me the middle school kids, they, they tend to gravitate once again towards the more sugary kinda breakfast foods and that things, they, they like those type items. But both groups would like to see a, a larger variety in the fruits that are prepared. Um, some more seasonal fruits that are hard to get a lot of times because we're not in school during the season, so. Um, they're, they're looking for a little more variety in fruits. The high school kids are huge fans of the curly fries. Almost every friend in the group wanted more curly fries, so we've added, we've added those on. Um, they were all very pleased with the service, which made me happy. They felt like they got great service and that the, uh, the people, the staff related well to them. Um, but mainly, they, a couple little things, you know, little, little changes. They'd see yogurt parfait, something like that along those lines that they would like to see in the future at the high school. Um, but, and, and then the, the complaints, a lot of it, they want salt, but we can't give them the salt. So, that was, that was, you know, one of the majors that they, they asked for stuff that you can't get, fried foods or salt or something along those lines, but. But yeah, mainly I think a, a little more variety in fruits and some little, little tweaking, little items that they've been looking for and they, they like the theme things that we do already, but they like the Taco Tuesday kinda thing or the Wi- Wing Wednesday, especially at the high school level. Um, so that's, that's some of the feedback we've gotten.
Great, thank you. And just my last question is, I don't remember in the past the Department of Defense being a source for local produce. Is that something new?
Well, it's, it's the DOD, it's through commodities with the government, so, uh, we're-
Like our food banks?
The district's allocated a certain amount of commodity dollars. So typically, what we do is take fifty percent of that and put it into DOD, which is the fresh fruit vegetable program. And then from there, we source and have to find a local, uh, produce vendor.
Oh, okay, so that's always been true?
Yeah.
Which is central.
Which is CIP, yeah, Central Illinois Produce.
And then whatever's left in the allocation, we use towards any other commodity. You can divert the products into, you know, you get X amount of cheese, you can divert it into your pizzas, into your other items. And then the rest of the items are brown box that we call it, so it's like your rice and flour and different items like that that will get delivered, um.
Frozen vegetables and those types of things, it's, it's complicated, but interesting.
Surplus, I got you.
And it, and it's ordered a year in, you know, almost a year in advance, so you really have to plan your menus. We've just completed the commodity order for next year, so you have to be ahead of the game. Your menus have to be ready before you're, before you're delivering, but.
That, that was what was interesting to me is they, I found out they're actually working their menus trying to offer things they didn't even order because Airmark put the order in last year.
Yeah.
So they're admit, they're, they're kinda restricted in some way this year because they're having to do their menus around what was ordered last year by another company. Cause they always order it.
And, and our responsibility of course is to utilize at least eighty-five percent of your allocation. Our goal's always more, you know, to get to a hundred. But, you know, you, you have to use so much of that commodity product in order for the district to get that net of, net of invoice, so.
So that's something we won't have to deal with next year, but this, this first year, that was kind of a restraint, I think, for us.
Right, yes.
We were questioning certain things around the menus, like why, this sounds kinda weird together. And it's because they were restricted by what they had to, had to order through.
We're trying to utilize what, what's been ordered and I don't know how many fries there were. Cat fries, fries, fries and more fries, but, um, but yes, exactly. We, we've been able to personalize that this year going ahead for next year, knowing what our menus are and what the kids like and what we feel would be more beneficial to the venue, so.
So some of the things we would have liked to have offered, we were limited to. So next year, you will see a change in, in some of the menu choices?
Well, and I was gonna mention, um, I was, we at two elementary schools, Peggy brought up the fresh fruit and vegetable program. So we, King and Dr. Williams, previously Prairie, were part of that, that program, um, for a coup- for several years.
Fresh fruit and vegetable grant, we got the grant.
The grant, the fresh fruit and vegetable grant. And so I'm glad to hear that you guys are offering because, you know, apples, oranges, bananas, those are great. But, you know, having seen students firsthand try things like jicama, star fruit, mango, persimmon, you know, kiwi, things they look at it initially and say, I'm not gonna eat that. And then you see their faces and they try it and they're like, wow, that is really good. So I'm glad that you're, you're, you're doing that because I think, you know, you know, especially certain populations of students, right? That's all they see is oranges, apples, bananas.
Right.
Um, so giving them that opportunity to have that exposure of, you know, try it, you might like it.
Right, right.
Questions?
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. We're gonna leave the cinnamon rolls for you. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. Uh, we have no call for any future special or executive meeting. That concludes our study topics. Um, we have no call for future special or executive meetings other than the one we're gonna have immediately after tonight's, uh, meeting. Uh, we're ready for superintendent's report, if you're ready.
Are you ready? Okay. So, um, the African American Club sends their thanks. Document their travels, um, last week in North Carolina. So this is them kinda throwing up the U at, uh, North Carolina Central University. So, um, as you know, they visited nine campuses on their, uh, HBC, Historically Black College and University tour. Um, they're, they made it back safe and sound on Friday and so I just, they, they just wanted me to send their thanks, so. That's the group, it was a pretty big group of students, so. Whoops. Oh, there we go, and this is a surprise. She told me not to, but I put it in there anyway. So, congrats to Angie Franklin and yay. I know you did. So, uh, so any, she did a great job and that's what she said this weekend, this past weekend at the Virginia Theater with so many other courageous women who shared their life journeys and their stories. So we just wanted to give her a little shout out. So she had to stand on the stage in front of hundreds of people and she did a great job, so yay. Um, Read Across America was this past Saturday, great turnout. I think the sunshine just like sent so many people out, so, uh, our own board member there. Uh, I know I saw Peggy, but I didn't, I wasn't up at the front when Peggy was up there. I know some of you were greeters. Yeah, I couldn't, I didn't get to see everybody because I was in the back. Um, so anyway, just, it was a great day, lots of, uh, lots of community support, lots of volunteers. Um, I, I, I don't remember seeing that many people out in a long time. I mean, it was a really, really packed house, um, from beginning to end. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to all the people who make that happen every year. It was there, I saw a lot of smiling, these two kids are from King. Um, so we having a lot of, uh, great pictures and, and, uh, lots of smiles this past Saturday.
And you even performed.
Yes, so-
She left that part out.
I didn't put that on there, but we got to do the, uh, Baby Shark song, Dr. Zola and I, Sam Banks, uh, Charles, uh, Young and Mayor Marlin, so, yeah, so it was a cute little skit. Um, this is two of our middle school students and Dr. Weemelt, Savannah Blandon and Todd Rint, um, who were nominated as, uh, citi- outstanding students by the Illinois, by Dr. Weemelt, uh, to the Illinois- uh, to the Illinois, uh, Principals Association. They have a breakfast every year. And these are our two young people that were recognized there a couple of weeks ago. So congratulations to Savannah and Todd. So, um, I know our board members who are doing negoti- who are a part of the negotiations team have had an opportunity to see the new policy manual, but I wanted our community and our, um, people watching at home and our staff to know this as well. So, uh, we have a searchable, uh, viewable online, um, board policy manual now. So a- as we just walked through our press documents, so as members of press, um, this is something, um, for a small fee, um, that we have ventured into, which, um, our, our previous board policy manual was a PDF. So it's really difficult to search and, and just really cumbersome to find things. So, um, this has been put on the website. So when you go to the board page, you'll see this. And then this is what the searchable document looks like. So there's a search engine, um, you can click into the different sections. Um, and it's just, it's gonna be so much more, uh, e- uh, user-friendly for us. I know I use it all the time. Everybody teases me about how excited I am about our board policy being, uh, searchable. But y- you'd be surprised how often we're in a meeting and, or I'm on the phone with attorneys and, you know, especially you guys know Dennis, he'll say, you have a board policy for that. And so I have to kind of go in and look for it. Um, but again, this is, this was something that we did not have to pay a lot. I mean, I think it was an additional nine hundred dollars or something without, we already paid dues to press. Um, they set it up for us and, um, and it's gonna be very helpful. So I just wanted our community and our staff and, um, our, I'll, I'll show this to the administrators. We have a cabinet meeting coming up, so they'll be able to, you know, make use of it at their level as well. So tomorrow night, uh, our boys' basketball team is going to the regional playoffs. So we're playing Imran Tool tomorrow night at seven. So we play Centennial. Um, and if we win there, we play again on Friday night. And as you guys know, last year they won the regional title. So they're, hopefully they're hoping to do that again. But, um, I just wanted people watching at home, um, come out and support them tomorrow night at Rantoul High School at seven o'clock. And that is it. Oh, no, it's not, sorry. Our high school orchestra is going to New York. Um, so they leave tomorrow. Um, they're going to the National High School Orchestra Cup in New York City. Um, they'll be there, uh, from March fifth to, um, to March ninth. They'll play at the Lincoln Center. So this is, uh, Ms. Gingold with part of the orchestra. So we're really excited, um, to, they're gonna, you know, go see Wicked and visit the nine eleven memorial and Times Square. So they're gonna do some, um, educational and fun things while they're there. But the main reason they're there are to, uh, to really participate in that, um, competition. So we wish Ms. Gingold and the students good luck.
All right. Board reports.
I was disappointed that our LA Division Dinner Meeting was canceled due to the weather. I was excited to show off our facilities, but yeah. Yeah, so we did not need, but, um, we will again.
Any other board reports? All right. Uh, we are prepared to adjourn to closed session. Uh, for the purposes of, I'll have to read these word for word, folks. For four purposes. The first one is, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Reason one. Reason two, collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Purpose three, purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. And the fourth and final purpose, litigation when an action against, affecting or on behalf of the particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the fin- for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the closed meeting minutes. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Is it second? Oh, moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Exum?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Hall?
Yes.